It's 6:30 and I'm calling the April 7 Planning Board Meeting to order. The first item on the agenda is the approval of the March 31 minutes, Mr. Secretary.
There were some minor corrections as minutes of March 31 that were corrected and I recommend approval.
I'll second.
Any discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, Epstein. He wasn't here.
And I guess I should say that I was watching it on television, so I heard everything. And then we move on now to approval not required plans. We do not have any tonight. Next on the agenda, public hearing. Applicant Nathan Ellis Highway LLC for a special permit to use a portion of the property located at 210 Nathan S. Ellis Highway for a waste disposal contractor, WDC. Engineer J. E. Landers Colley. And for the applicant, please. Oh, wait a minute, I'm sorry. I always mess this up. Notices, Mr. Secretary.
Chairman, the publishing dates of this legal notice was March 20th, March 27th, and April 3rd. Eight of those were notified by certified mail. Find five signed receipts or return. Excuse me.
Chairman. For the record, my name's Jeff Oppenheim. I'm an attorney here in Falmouth. I practice in the law firm of Oppenheim and Nickerson at 156 Locust Street. My partner Jeff Nickerson is here with me. My client Carl Cabosa is sitting next to him. Carl is the manager of the Nathan Ellis Highway LLC. He's also president of Cabosa Disposal Corporation. And our CFO is sitting here, Greg Crowley. And our office manager, Kim McIntyre, is sitting next to Carl. The board knows from looking in their files that I've represented Carl and his wife and his corporations for over 20 years, most of which has been before this board on a variety of special permits. When I first met him, he had a small dump truck and a backhoe. So he's a Falmouth success story as far as I'm concerned. He's accomplished a lot as a businessman and he's been a good citizen in our community. And I'm proud to have represented him for so long. He has been involved in nonprofits in our community. Falmouth Road Race, Police Athletic League, the Falmouth Education Foundation. And he's also served as the chairman of our Chamber of Commerce. He currently employs 37 people. Nineteen of whom are residents of our community. Twenty-four of these individuals are employees of the disposal company, which is going to be the subject of this evening's presentation. I'd just like to review with you what my presentation will be in outline form and then we'll go right into it. I'm going to first talk about what specifically the subject matter is of this, of these hearings this evening. I'm going to review with you in detail our site plan. And then I'm going to go into the four specific requests that we're asking the board in this special permit this evening. And those are to park municipal solid waste trucks, to store MSW dumpsters, three is to aggregate cardboard, and lastly, to compost organic materials. I'll then review with the board the requirements of Section 240, 216 of our zoning bylaws, which I know as requirements you're all very familiar with. And then of course, I'm sure you'll have questions and I'm sure the public will have questions as well and we'll do our best to answer those questions this evening or if the hearing is continued at subsequent hearings. Excuse me. So a quick review. In August of 2014, this board issued a decision amending the existing special permit for the site as a contractor's yard. In that decision, which I'm sure you all remember, the board concluded that Cabosa Excavating, Inc. was a contractor as defined by our zoning bylaw. But Cabosa Disposal did not meet your definition of a contractor. So the board concluded that for Cabosa Disposal to operate on the site, there would need to be a change in the zoning bylaws permitting such a use. And you rendered that decision on August 26th in 2014. Within three weeks, our office submitted two petitioner warrant articles for consideration first by you, our planning board, and ultimately by our Fall Town Meeting. The first article, which was, became Article 9 in last fall's warrant book, changed the zoning for our client's parcel to light industrial C from agricultural. The light industrial C designation allows a contractor's yard by right, where previously it's been by special permit. The second article, which became Article 9 of the warrant, created a new use in the LIC district. And that use was created by this board through town meeting on parcels of greater than five acres in the LIC district. And it was a use that was allowed only by special permit of this board and it was for waste disposal contractor use. Both articles passed by our town meeting membership and on February 19th of 2015, our Attorney General's Office approved both articles by written letter issued to our town clerk. On March 12th, we submitted, less than a month, we submitted this special permit application to the planning board seeking approval for our use of the site as a waste disposal contractor's yard in addition to the contractor use which is now permitted by right. So the petition before you this evening is under the new Section 240, 64.5D to allow Cabosa Disposal Corporation to operate a waste disposal contractor use on the property owned by Nathan Ellis Highway LLC. 240, 64.5 states the following. "By special permit from the planning board, waste disposal contractor use, including a handling facility where solid waste, non-compostable bulky waste, commercial solid waste, recyclable material, asphalt pavement, brick and concrete, and construction and demolition waste is brought, sorted, temporarily stored and/or transferred from one vehicle or container to another vehicle or container for transport off-site to recycling or solid waste treatment processing or disposal facility. Compostable materials, commercial organic material, and compostable bulky waste may be brought to the site and composted on-site. Any materials, equipment, or vehicles used in connection with waste disposal may be stored, parked, serviced, and maintained at the site. The following requirements shall apply in addition to the requirements of Section 240, 216 of the zoning bylaws pertaining to the issuance of special permits. Number one, the lot shall have a minimum lot area of five acres. Number two, the waste disposal contractor's use shall not be permitted in a water resource protection district. Number three, any site granted a special permit shall be further subject to the requirements of the Mass Department of Environmental Protection. And four, all terms used in 240, 64.5D, which I just read, shall have the meanings defined in 310 CMR 19. Or any regulations that succeed that regulation. No special permit may issue unless the applicant incorporates procedures and practices in accordance with 310 CMR 19.207." As I said earlier, the petitioner, and I'm going to emphasize this, is requesting the right to do four activities and only these four activities. Park trucks, store dumpsters, aggregate cardboard, and compost of organic materials. Let's turn to the site plan. And most of you are familiar with it, but for purposes of the record, I want to take you through it and I'm going to go west to east. I'll try to be as thorough as possible. I'm going to use this device here. On the west, we have a garage building which is here. That garage building is our shop and it's also a storage area for some of these trucks during the wintertime because the trucks have hydraulic systems and especially in winters like we just had, we need to keep the hydraulics warm. The floor in this building has radiant heat. Okay, so it keeps the building comfortable for the people who have to work there and for the trucks that park there overnight. We have employee parking in this area here. So the folks that work in this building tend to park right here. This yellow dot is our well. And that may become an important issue a little bit later in this discussion. Over here, we have an area where the trucks are washed and also are fueled. This area in here. This is, and it's also a trailer which is designated right there. This is a general storage area here and the trucks that we're going to discuss this evening and I'll show you pictures of, they are parked here. And they're parked facing up, facing towards Nathan Ellis Highway. So when they leave in the morning, when it's not that cold and they're inside the building, they pull out and go onto 151 and head to their assigned routes. In this area here is an enclosure with a cell tower. And that cell tower was permitted by our zoning board of appeals. You have a copy of that decision in your file as part of the referral from the zoning board of appeals. This area over here is additional truck parking. And there's temporary buildings here and here. Those buildings are cement blocks with hoops and they're used seasonally. This area over here is parking in the front yard and setback. And there'll be more said about that later. There is a large berm which I'm sure all of you are familiar with that runs across the entire front of the property. There's a gap there on the entrance and then over on this side of the property as well. This building is our office building. It has parking around it for employees of that building and also visitors to the site, customers, et cetera. In the basement of that building is a security department permitted by you under special permit. Empty dumpster storage is represented by these two rectangular areas here. And we'll talk about the size and the type of dumpsters a little bit later in the presentation. This area has cribs for stone and other materials that we're storing on site. Over here is a cardboard recycling area. If you allow this special permit, this is where the cardboard will be temporarily stored and before it is placed into 100-yard trailers to be removed for recycling. I call this area over here the manufacturing facility because one of the things that my client does is he manufactures dirt. And this was an education to me, but it takes different components to make dirt. And we have a fill stockpile here and we have here processed dirt and grattle stockpile. This device here is a storing or sifting machine here. It's portable, it can be moved around the site, but it spends most of its life right in this area. This area, which is outlined here, is a loom pile and is where we would propose to do our compostable organic recycling on top of that pile. You can see from the plan that there it is. This lot is basically flat until we get to the eastern end here, where you see the contour lines get very close together. And that tells you we have elevation over here. There's a 200-foot or 210-foot, 200-foot wide utility engine over here, which basically is up on a hill. And the hill is accessed by a, you know, a dirt, narrow dirt road right in here. That's also how we access the top of this loom pile. There is stockpiled some boulders here. Boulders are valuable in some projects and are sought after. This area here is the rail line that runs into the Mass Military Reservation and goes under the highway right here. The area to the rear is owned by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. It's open space. There's nothing back there except some trails. The property on to the west is owned by Dr. DeLance, who has a annual hospital and also a boarding facility. And of course, the highway is, the Nathan Ellis Highway is right in front of the site. Route 28 is up here a few hundred yards to the west. We have an onsite septic system which is located behind the office building over here. And I assume there's a separate one somewhere over here. I don't know the location, but I'm sure it's there. The site itself is 8.63 acres. 1.88 of that is buffer. The usable area is 6.75 acres and there's undisturbed area of 2.63 acres and all of that data is on the corner of the plan. Now I'd like to get into item by item our requests under our special permit. And I'd like to start with the parking of the waste disposal vehicles. So currently my client owns seven front load and two rear load. I'm going to use the term MSW, which is just municipal solid waste, trucks which are dedicated to collecting municipal solid waste. In addition, we own four roll-off trucks and two swap-load trucks which are used for collecting both MSW and construction and demolition debris. And it's important to understand that there is some crossover between Cabosa Excavating and Cabosa Disposal. As an excavation company, we have the right to demolish buildings as part of what we do, clean up sites, and we use roll-offs for that purpose. Through this special permit, we're seeking approval to park, service, and maintain trucks which are used in the collection of MSW at the property. This approval should not be limited to the vehicles that I just mentioned, but should be a general approval for vehicles of this purpose. My client buys and sells vehicles like some of us go to the grocery store. I mean, it's, his stock in trade is vehicles. His company runs based on the type and the sophistication of the vehicles. As I said, during cold months, certain vehicles will be parked within this building to keep the hydraulic fluids not from freezing. During warmer weather, the trucks will be parked right here in this area designated on the plan. So this is an approximate area. It's not, you know, to the inch, but it shows you where the trucks are parked daily. Typically, these trucks leave the site or we were, we want permission for them to leave the site anywhere between midnight and 5:00 a.m. And that depends on a lot of factors. Depends on what route they're running, what the weather is, whether they have to run more than one route. But the collection of municipal solid waste is an activity which gets done in the early morning hours because these trucks are large and they need to get into areas that are behind buildings and they need to navigate with as little other traffic around them as possible. This is no news to this board. We discussed this last year. I know that in your knowledge base, you know that these trucks are operating on the early morning hours of the day, whether it's in Falmouth or whether it's in Manhattan. Now, the vehicles are back at our facility usually by midday. And what they're doing during their day is they're picking up municipal solid waste either in a rear-load truck or in a front-load truck. And when the truck is full, they're bringing it to a transfer station or to CMAS and they're offloading the truck so they can go get more garbage. It's very simple when you think about it. Having garbage on the truck is a short-term thing, okay? Because the truck can't make money if it's filled with garbage. It only makes money when it's able to pick up garbage. In the morning, when the men come who operate this truck, these trucks, they start the trucks up. They do a safety check. They're professional drivers. They hold advanced licenses. And they have to make sure the truck is going to be fine to go out to work. Doesn't take long. Takes about 15 minutes. And again, this is not all happening at once, okay? These trucks are not all leaving within 10 or 15 minutes. They leave over several hours generally. Start up, 15 minutes, they're warmed up, they get in the cab and they get on Route 151 and they go where they need to go. Into Falmouth, north on 28, east on 151. It all depends what their route is on that day. The vehicles will not be parked with garbage overnight unless there's an emergency. And an emergency is obviously something that's not planned. Well, what would that be? Weather. Some extreme weather event. Closure of a transfer station. So we can't offload the garbage or possibly a breakdown of a vehicle. These are rare occurrences. But we did have some weather events this winter which upset everyone's schedule. And that might be one example. So we're the, asking again for the ability to park and service these vehicles on the site. I want to show you some photos. Just so we're all talking about the same thing. These are the trucks that I just referred to. There's a front-load truck which is, you know, the large truck. The largest truck in our fleet. This is a rear-load truck which is something where, you know, it's more common. And these vehicles are the vehicles that transport the roll-offs. This is called a swap loader. Picks up smaller dumpsters. And this is obviously for the very large dumpsters and also for the cardboard recycling compactors. Next, I'd like to discuss with you our second request, which is the storage of municipal solid waste dumpsters. It won't be a surprise to the board to learn that they come in different sizes. And these are all the sizes that we use. Starting with small, two-yard, going next to four-yard trash containers. Six, eight, 10. And this is actually a 30-yard roll-off. And the 15-yard is basically the same size, but not as high. So those are the tools of this trade. So we're seeking approval from the board to be able to store these devices at our property in the areas designated on our site plan. So because of the nature of MSW, municipal solid waste, and So because of the nature of MSW, municipal solid waste, and CND, which is construction and demolition debris, we want the board to understand that these dumpsters are not segregated. In other words, the ones that are used for construction and demolition may also be used for municipal solid waste. They don't have a label on them, you know, for municipal solid waste only, or for construction debris only. So if you go to the yard, you can't tell, you know, what the use is going to be of that dumpster the following day. So because of the nature of this, we ask that the board consider granting a special permit allowing the storage of both MSW and CND dumpsters in the empty dumpster storage areas without further segregation. So we don't have to put one in one area, one in the other. Requiring designation would be problematic, and the reason it would be problematic is that at different times of year, of the year, we have different demands for different-sized dumpsters. In the summer, things tend to be crazy on Cape Cod. And so, you know, the larger dumpsters tend to go out, the smaller ones tend to come back. And in the winter, there's something of a reverse cycle there. So it all depends what time of year you come to the site, you'll see different, a different inventory of the dumpsters that are on the site. So these dumpsters are at our site, and they're empty, okay? They're only full in an emergency, okay? Again, emergencies, very rare, but occasionally it happens. What is an emergency? Someone calls, there's a dumpster full, and it's Friday after the transfer station has closed, okay? Under the special permit that you granted in the past, we had the permission to store a limited number of dumpsters on the site, full until we could get to the transfer station, which is usually the next business day. Keep in mind, the economics, and the economics really drive this. The dumpster is not making money if it's sitting in the yard, empty or full. It's not making any money. So we need to dump it and get it back into circulation. So those are our dumpsters. The third item... The third item is aggregating cardboard. The aggregation of cardboard is a very important recycling event for our community and for the upper Cape, because there are some businesses that generate a lot of cardboard. These are two of the largest units that we use. One is 35 yards, and the other one is 50 yards. These are compacters. So they may be at our hospital, or they may be down a woods hole. And they're removed when they're full, and they're brought to our site where they're emptied. The cardboard is removed, and it's piled up. When there is a critical mass of cardboard, one of our operators loads the cardboard into a 100-yard trailer. And the trailer goes off to recycler. That happens twice a week. Pile grows early in the week, a pile leaves by midweek, grows again, leaves by the end of the week. And that's, you know, the rhythm of, of the business. And generally speaking, these are removed by that large, the larger truck that I showed you, and they're immediately brought back to the, to the place where they were moved from, if they're in our community. The further away these, these are from our yard, the more likely we are to bring another compactor and swap them out. Take the one that's full, put an empty one in, okay? You should also know that the cardboard also goes in these dumpsters, which are smaller. And you've probably seen them around Falmouth, where it says cardboard only. Those get picked up by the smaller truck, again, brought to the site, or picked up by the large truck, and front-end dumped into the larger truck. Coming to the site, they're at the site two or three days, they're loaded, and they We did a little flow chart here for you. I think it's consistent with what I just said, but to quickly go over it. Here's the cardboard, coming in from commercial sources and some of the residential customers that we service. It's being aggregated at the site. It's then being loaded on a, on a truck, with a trailer, large trailer. It's covered, and it's brought to a recycling facility. At the bottom here is the vehicles and the equipment that is used at each stage of what I'm trying to describe. So, you know, we have commercial two to 10-yard dumpsters, which the cardboard goes into. There's containers, which compact, which I showed you, the large containers. And then there's residential, you know, 96-gallon toders, in some situations, where people put cardboard in. We use a commercial front-end loader, and recycling roll-off trucks, and rear-load recycling trucks. At the yard, we use an excavator to load the 100-yard trailer. The trailer is pulled by, by a cab. We have another flow chart for this as well. So I did a little research, according to our Department of Environmental Protection website, and I invite you to take a look and confirm what I'm about to tell you, that diverting food waste from landfills by composting has a positive environmental impact. Food waste accounts for more than 25% of our waste stream after we take out our recycling. Currently, our, when I say currently, the statistics are from 2014, less than 10% is diverted from disposal. So, and that includes surplus foods from supermarkets and restaurants, which some, some of them are now going to food banks and other institutions that take care of people who are having a hard time putting food on the table. So we have actually been granted by our Department of Environmental Protection, as of March 1, a general permit for food composting. A copy of that application is in your file. The Commonwealth is encouraging people to do this across the Commonwealth. Again, as of early in 2014, there were 30 licensed composters in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. I think you're going to see that explode. One of the reasons for that is that I think we are all becoming more sensitive to that part of the waste stream. The other reason is that the Commonwealth of Massachusetts is imposing on certain food producers, certain institutions, the requirement to recycle food waste. And that requirement came into being in October of 2014. So we have been composting at our site since we acquired the site. What we've been composting is mainly yard waste and that sort of organic debris. And it's something that we used in our excavation business, and, you know, we brought soils to the site, you know? We're experts at manufacturing loam. It's a valuable resource, and it's a, it's a good commodity for us. We sell this to, to contractors in the community. So again, the area we're going to be doing this is right over here, okay? It's labeled on the plan. And we're going to pick up the food waste, represented on this end. It'll be in toders, and... Toders are labeled, right down here. Food waste though. They're put in the back of one of the trucks, and that truck is dedicated for the recycling of food waste. That's represented, obviously, by the truck in the middle. It's brought to the site, and it's actually brought up this way, backed up onto the top of this 12-foot-high long pile, and it's dumped. And once it's dumped, it gets mixed, gets mixed with other ingredients. It's a recipe, okay? Some brown stuff, some green stuff. And the idea is, ultimately, we end up with a product to enhance the soils that we have, and enriches the soils. Something that I was not aware of was that, you know, in some projects, the landscape architects, the engineers, are requesting a certain type of soil for their project, for their plantings. And, you know, it's sort of a customized mix. Well, my client is able to do that. He's able to accommodate, you know? How much sand do you want? How much loom do you want, et cetera? And the product is essentially baked. It has to get to a certain temperature, and it is, has to have a certain amount of oxygen, and has to have the right mix of, of greens and browns, without going into painful detail, because I am not an expert on this. And after about a 90-day process, we end up with an end product, which is loom. Now, this is done in, in windrows, okay? The windrows are about five to eight feet high, and they're, I'll double-check this to make sure I... And they're about 10 to 16 feet wide. And they're going to be on top, if you give us permission of this, of this pile here, and they're going to be placed there in a way that we can bring a piece of equipment onto the pile and turn the product, which is required as far as bringing enough oxygen in, and we are also going to be monitoring on a daily basis the temperature of the product. This is the device that, it's basically a very long thermometer, but it also measures oxygen. And the folks who are going to be monitoring the windrows will be using that to determine, is the temperature right? Is it too cold? Is it too hot? Is there enough oxygen? Is there too much oxygen, et cetera? And based on that, they're going to be adding or subtracting, they're going to be changing the configuration of the windrow, they may be adding water, they may be adding other materials to reduce the amount of water. But this will, this is the diagnostic tool that is used. It has a very long stainless steel extension, and it's not a real complicated tool, but I earlier said that the Commonwealth is requiring a large generators of food, food waste to recycle. And they define large generators as institutions, this could be business or nonprofit, which generate one ton of food waste per week. That's on, that's on an average. So, you know, we believe that this will affect places like our hospital, retirement homes, perhaps some of our scientific institutions, and maybe some of our restaurants as well. And certain institutions may choose to recycle even if they don't meet that, excuse me, one ton a week requirement. Now, last night, we had a meeting with our Board of Health downstairs, and we discussed this aspect of what we were going to present to you this evening. And after our presentation and discussion that lasted over an hour, with a good give and take, the Board of Health, I believe, has sent a referral up to you. I haven't actually seen the referral, but the board discussed recommending that you approve this, subject to there being a monitor well placed near this operation to monitor any leachate that may be coming out of this process. It's our corporate opinion that there will be very little leachate, because this is sitting on nine or 12 feet of loom. But we are already pursuing the right person to tell us where to locate this monitor well. The Board of Health said, go out, get an expert, find someone who will tell you the best place to put this monitor well, and then come to us and get a permit to actually install the monitoring well. And so we're, we already have some recommendations. We haven't been in touch with these folks, but we did get recommendations. And the recommendations came through the folks who work out at the base, who are monitoring hundreds of wells in and around our community because of the plumes. So whether that person will be a groundwater, you know, hydrologist, whether it'll be an environmental engineer, I can't tell you, but we're going to try to get someone who really knows where to place this. And then the Board of Health is, I assume, going to then give us permission and tell us the protocol that they would like us to follow, so we're not putting excess nitrogen, which is really what the byproduct of all of this, into the groundwater. It's interesting, the nitrogen, I think, enhances the compost, so, you know, but it's also a leachate of the process. Now, the other thing that we had to do for the Department of Environmental Protection, and we shared a copy with you and a copy with our Board of Health, is that we had to have certain plans in place in order to qualify for the general permit to compost. The general permit is a small-quantity composter, as compared to, you know, businesses that are doing large volume. We would anticipate one ton a week of, of food waste, which is not a lot in volume, starting out, perhaps growing if it's successful and people want to use this service, but it's not easy. But it's not easy to tell you exactly how much it will be because we don't know. But I will tell you that we have to tell the DEP how much we're collecting. And we'll know that because the people that we collect from will be paying us. So again, that's information that we will have. So we had to prepare basically four plans. And these are plans to have available in case they're needed. The first is a toxic control plan, which relates to non-organic substances. An odor control plan, what happens if the piles smell. A vector control plan, I didn't know what a vector was until I had the opportunity to read this. Those are critters of all kinds, birds, mice, rats, coyotes. And lastly, a contingency plan. So we do want the Board to know that our well, which is, again, that yellow dot, is 590 feet from the end of this compost area over here. Okay? So the state and our town becomes concerned when things are within 250 feet. So we're over twice the distance to our well source. And we have no interest in polluting our own well. Okay? Because that well is, you know, potable water for the site, for the people who work there, and for the person who lives in the apartment in the basement. So I'm going to just quickly run through the requirements of 240 to 16. And then I'm going to surrender the podium unless you would like to ask me any questions. So as the Board is aware, you have a requirement under our bylaw before you issue a special permit to go through the requirements of 240 to 16. You have the job of determining whether the proposed use will not have adverse effects which overbalance its beneficial use. And you're supposed to measure this as it relates to the neighborhood and to our community at large. So the first thing that you must consider is whether the site is adequate in size for the use. The zoning requires a five-acre site. We have 8.6 acres, 8.63 acres to be exact. So we would submit to you that we have adequate space. You have to determine if the site is suitable for this use. I'd submit to you that the parcel was rezoned by our town meeting for and anticipating this hearing this evening. And perhaps other hearings for other people in our community who have sites of five acres who want to do similar activities. The third issue that you have to consider is the impact on traffic flow and safety, whether this is going to be detrimental to the neighborhood or our town. The site is on Route 151. Route 151 is a state highway. It's a busy road. There's traffic on it at all hours. It is our front door. Our side door is Route 28 heading north and south, just down the road. I think the Board, when they suggested to Town Meeting that this is a site that should be changed to LIC, had considered this already. But I guess you need to reconsider it and reaffirm what you already are on record as saying that this is a good site for this sort of thing. You talked about Route 151 and on Thomas Landers Road in particular for these sorts of uses. Whether there'll be a negative impact on neighborhood visual character, including views and vistas. The site has a very beautiful berm in the front. It's been planted with mature trees and shrubs. Visually, I don't think you really can see the activity that we're asking to do, frankly, unless you come through the entrance and look. We have neighbors to the north, which is the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. To the east, we have the U.S. government in a rail line. The south is Nathan Ellis Highway. And the west is a veterinarian clinic and a boarding facility for animals. I think it's very well positioned for this use. You're supposed to examine our, whether we have adequate method of sewage disposal, source of water, and adequate provisions for drainage. We have all of that, okay? We have onsite sewage disposal facilities. That's one of the things my client does. He installs septic systems. We have adequate water in that well. And we have no problem with drainage on this site. Some of it's paved, but a lot of it is, you know, sandy soils, compacted. Are there adequate utilities and public services? Yes, we do fine with the utilities that we have at the site. We haven't had any problems. We don't have and will not anticipate having any additional need for public services if you grant us the special permit. Whether the use will have a positive effect on the supply of affordable housing for the town? There won't be any impact, pro or con. We're not asserting that we will have any impact. The person who lives in the apartment in the basement may be renting at an affordable rate or may not. It all depends on the circumstances of that person. Frequently, it is someone in our employ who needs housing. Whether the use will comply with all applicable zoning bylaws of the town of Falmouth? We think it does. Ultimately, you're the arbiter of that. I understand that. But we don't see any, anything being in contravention of our bylaw. So I thank you for your time, your attention, your patience. I know this was a long presentation, and I'm available to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Jeff. That was very, I think, concise. You say long, but this is a complex issue. And I'd like to let the Board know and the public know that there is a letter authored by Jeff in the file folder with everything that he's put in it, including the composting plan that's required because this was so much information, it's hard to take it all in. So I'd like you all to know that, okay? And I want to first start this off as part of the question so that you all know that, the Board members know that, the referrals that we have received. The first one that Jeff alluded to is from the Board of Health. On April 6, 2015, the Board of Health determined that the land is suitable for the proposed use, provided a monitoring well is properly located on the property in order to establish existing groundwater quality under the site and to monitor water quality as the operation activity increases over time. So that's one. And this is from the fire department. AFPO Mattel reviewed the plans in your office regarding this property. He reports that the current plans are not sufficient enough for our department to make any recommendations at this time. When more detailed plans are available, please contact our fire prevention office, and we will make ourselves available. The planning office will be contacting the fire department to find out what their concerns are and then contacting, I assume Jeff will work. This is from Water, DPW Water System. There are no water mains abutting this site and no water service to the site. If water is required, the amount and required pressure would need to be examined. Jeff has asserted that they have sufficient water on the site to meet their needs. And let's see. Okay, now we get to, this is the food waste composting operation that I mentioned that has been provided. And this is Mr. Oppenheimer's letter with all the details and pictures of the various vehicles that he mentioned to and showed you. We have something from the ZBA, and this is simply a mention of the communication tower that's on the property that they permitted a number of years ago. So that is what is in the file so far on referrals. I also want the Board and the public to know that we have four letters on file supporting this proposal and that there is one negative anonymous filing that is, as I said, negative. It's opposed to it. So that is what is in the file here. And now I'd like to go to the Board to ask any questions. Yes, Paul?
Madam Chair, before I take questions, I'd like to just be on the record as objecting to the unsigned negative letter. I don't think it's a good policy for our town boards to be accepting into what I would consider as an attorney evidence. So just for the record, I would like to object.
I personally happen to agree with you, but we've taken no vote of the Board as to how we will handle that sort of thing.
I understand you don't have a policy. I'm not asking you to create a policy.
Okay, so Paul?
Mr. Oppenheimer, I think it was an excellent presentation, very thorough in my compliments. I just have an overall comment I'd like to make. You alluded to the Attorney General approving the vote.
Yes.
I might point out that the vote was by less than one vote. And that's one of the reasons why into the Attorney General's office, there was not an awful lot of support for this change during Town Meeting. And secondly, at the beginning, you talked about the merits of your client and how he does things in the community. There were two testimonials, if I remember correctly, in support of that, very lengthy arguments in favor of what your client does in the community. And frankly, I think we should be voting on the merits of this case and how it fits in the bylaws and not the personality of the applicant.
I agree with your statement, Paul. And I know that the Board will vote, hopefully in favor, based on the merits. I would like to respectfully disagree with your comment about Town Meeting. It was, Town Meeting passed these bylaws. They passed them by a two-thirds vote, which is a heavy burden in our Town Meeting. And the Attorney General approves all articles passed at all Town Meetings in all of the communities in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. So for the purposes of the Board's analysis, these are bylaws of our community now. And, you know, whether it passes by one vote or 100 votes really is, at this point, not an issue.
Thank you.
Okay, Doug?
Mr. Oppenheimer, I had a long list of questions, and you answered all of them except for the one that we're still waiting on the fire department. And I'm wondering, is the well going to be able to produce enough water to fight fires in the event of, you know, composting can sometimes combust? And also, I can, like, as we saw in Blacksmith Shaw Farm, go underground. So you'll need quite a firefighting capability without a water main. Will you have to improve the well possibly?
So I just want the Board to understand that the referral came from the fire department today. So we had no opportunity to really react and discuss this with the fire safety officer and the chief or whoever we have to discuss it with. But I assure you that before the next meeting, there will be discussions. We'll find out what their concerns are. We'll do our best to satisfy their concerns. I don't know, Doug, whether, I can't answer your questions definitively. I am aware of that brush fire. We're really not composting brush, okay? That's one thing. The other thing that the Board should be aware of is that from time to time, my client gets called to fires to assist our fire department with his heavy equipment. So he's not a firefighter, I'm not saying that, but under the direction of our fire department, he can use his equipment effectively to help our fire department. They have the equipment to quickly suffocate a fire or alternatively to spread and find the fire and get to it. You know, there's some heavy equipment on the site. And I've discussed this with him, and he's, he's very confident that they would have the ability to stop something quickly. As far as the amount of water and the pressure, you know, I can't, I can't speak to that.
I didn't really think you would. It's just one thing.
Yeah, yeah. So my client is telling me that that fire was underground.
Right.
Okay? Again, I'd like to emphasize, these windrows are going to be on top of loom, you know, which is accessible from all sides. And, you know, it's not going to, there's nothing to burn, you know, in the loom pile. It would only be in the windrows potentially. But if you're monitoring the windrows and you're keeping track of the temperatures and you're turning them and, you know, you're doing all the things that you're supposed to be doing in order to make a good product, in order to make money, then that should not be happening.
Okay. And the other question I had was, when I was reading through the mitigation plan, it seems like for all the mitigation, the mitigation action is to turn the pile. And so that's really all that's required for the odor control? Is there any other further measures that would possibly be taken?
Yeah, well, that's a good question. And it's not just turning the pile, okay? It's adding wood chips. And the area between the cardboard recycling area and the windrows is wood chips. So that's part of the process of hastening the breakdown of the materials, and it's also part of keeping the odor down, covering the top with wood chips. And, you know, we have a, pretty much an endless supply of that stuff.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Ken, do you have anything?
Not at this point, no.
Jim?
Ralph?
Wow. I've got a bunch of stuff.
Okay.
Okay. I'm assuming that Mr. Cavosa's two companies are the only proposed tenants of this property.
That's correct. At this time, we have two tenants at the property, Cavosa Excavating and Cavosa Disposal.
Okay.
Oh, well, I'm sorry.
Oh, the cell tower.
The cell tower.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
I'm ready to disclose that, yeah.
I guess I meant more functioning, operating, daily sort of companies. You've listed the vehicles that are currently in use.
Yes.
And I'm also wondering, however, because on the prior plan that we were looking at before, the other, back in the past, there was a walking floor trailer that loads stuff. Is that still on site? I assumed it was. It's a fairly expensive piece of equipment.
Yeah, keep in mind that some of the equipment that you're familiar with being at this site from past public hearings is still at the site and will continue to be at the site because there's Cavosa Excavating Company, which now operates by right in LIC zone. So listing the equipment that's, you know, the dump trucks and the backhoes and the excavators and the things that are used in that end of the business is not part of a special permit at this point.
I do understand that. But then are the vehicles that you specifically listed in your letter new to the mix? Or were they listed under previous?
They were listed, I believe, and I can double-check in last, in last year's request to amend our special permit.
Okay.
I believe they were listed. But I will double-check that.
Just to make sure.
I mean, I remember giving you pictures and showing you how they were parked and, you know, so I'm pretty sure they're all on the list.
Okay. Let's see. You already answered, how do we distinguish between dumpsters and trash containers, and they're intermixed?
They are.
Pretty much, intermixed usage according to when you need them for whichever use.
Right.
And we have your description of the DEP requirements for the composting, how that's done and how it's tested.
Right, right.
Now, I have a further question on that, however. When you are getting When you are getting restaurant waste, are you asking the restaurant to separate out the vegetable materials from the meat materials?
No, we're not.
That's all put together?
No, we're not.
Okay.
Okay. That will all be part of our composting operation. We're obviously asking them to not put certain things in these toters. And when the gentlemen who go from our company to pick up the toters, if they find things in there, they look in and they find things that shouldn't be in there, they will not take them. Or when they're unloading them, if there's something at the bottom, like a plastic fork or, you know, maybe a metal fork, then they'll be taking that out. And that also goes on in the cardboard end of the operation. These cardboard dumpsters, they say, you know, for cardboard use only, okay? But, you know, you're leaving your rental, and you're looking for a place to drop your bag of garbage for being on the Cape for the weekend. Sometimes they end up in our cardboard dumpsters. Those are removed before we recycle the cardboard, and we have lots of dumpsters that we can put those, that garbage in, right on site. That's part of the job of what goes on as part of recycling, because we want a good product going in the truck to the recycler.
So it's fair to say that if one of those toters is pretty thoroughly contaminated, you don't even attempt to put it into recycling? It goes out with the garbage?
That's what they will, yeah. That's what they'll have to do.
Okay. And presumptively, you will then counsel your client that this is a no-no. You don't do this.
Yeah, well, I think, right, exactly. I think, especially in the summertime, when things get warm, they're not going to want to have that stuff around, and hopefully, you know, next time, they'll do it right.
Uh-huh. Okay. You answered all of that. I'd like to suggest to the board, perhaps, that the prior permit be incorporated into what we're seeing here, because the questions I've asked is, how does this work with what's already by right on the site? And I can see in my mind that this would lend to confusion when things are intermixed on the site, and people might be upset that, well, that's not supposed to be here. So if we can incorporate, like I just asked about the walking floor trailer, that it might be beneficial.
Well, we'd be happy to, you know, talk about what both businesses do. We don't believe that there's going to be a lot of confusion. You know, they're, you know, we have already discussed with the board, you know, that one company is an excavation company. They're allowed to do construction and demolition work as a contractor in our community. And the disposal company is also allowed to do construction and demolition. So there is a little bit of crossover there. But, you know, if the board has any confusion about that, then, you know, let's try to address it and work it through.
No, I understand that. I'm just putting it out to Marlene. You wanted to make a comment?
I actually, yes. I don't think you necessarily want to incorporate the permit. I think what you, what I would suggest you do is that you incorporate the previous record into the record of this hearing. So, because you do have a history with this site. So by doing that, you don't have to necessarily remember when exactly you first heard about X or Y piece of equipment or process, but if you pull the record forward, then it's available to you, whereas you don't have to artificially try to forget what you already know.
That is what I meant with my statement. I just didn't state it correctly to get the end result.
Yeah, you want to take the whole record.
Mm-hmm, the record. So that's part of that, so that there isn't that confusion as to when what happened. Paul?
Mr. Oppenheimer, as you related, the, your client has been bringing in construction, building debris, inert materials, and now this is a change in getting food waste coming in. Could you explain a little bit the operational process, whether you're going to have expertise to assist in that? Because there is a big departure from just storing some concrete waste.
Yeah. Okay, yeah. Okay, so just as a clarification, we don't bring construction, demolition debris to the site. We may be picking it up someplace and delivering it to a transfer station, CMAS, et cetera, whoever is accepting or open to accept that material. So in other words, I think it's important for the board to understand, if I can't emphasize this enough, I don't think, which is, you know, we're not a repository for municipal solid waste or for construction and demolition waste, okay? All we're asking for is to be a temporary repository for cardboard so it can be recycled and food waste. Again, so it can be recycled. You know, we're not interested in collecting food waste. We're interested in making that food waste into a product that we can then sell. As far as expertise goes, Paul, we think we have the expertise, okay? You know, most of us, I suspect, are backyard composters, okay? I know I am. But, you know, I'm not real sophisticated about it. I, you know, my product doesn't come out the other end in 90 days. I'm not turning it enough. But this is not rocket science here that we're talking about, okay? Yes, it does involve a measurement, you know, daily or multiple times a day to make sure the temperatures are right, to kill whatever pathogens are in, in whatever it is that's in the food. And turning it is part of the process to bring oxygen in, making sure the mix is right. We believe we have that expertise. The Department of Environmental Protection believes we have that expertise. We have been doing this, you know, not with food waste, but we have been doing it. We've been doing it with agricultural waste, corn stalks, cranberries that were accidentally contaminated or dumped on the road or something like that, potato peelings, okay? Not stuff coming out of the back of a kitchen or a back of, you know, an institution, but, you know, we have been doing this. It's in our expertise, and we've been doing it for basically 20 years, because it's part of the excavation contracting business, the making of loom. You know, they take your topsoil off, okay? Where do they bring it? What happens to it? It gets resold. And that whole process has been going on for, you know, eons. All we're doing is we're enhancing that soil now with this other waste. And we're being encouraged to do it by our state and, to some extent, by our Board of Health, because they think it's a good idea, and hopefully you'll think it's a good idea. I mean, you endorse the bylaw, so I, you know, that tells me that I think you had a notion that it was a good thing for our community. It doesn't mean that you're going to grant us a special permit. I understand that. But just think about if my client or people like him were not doing what they do. I mean, really, you know, things would break down pretty quickly behind our commercial buildings and other places. It would be nasty. At some point in my youth, I remember a strike in the city of New York, and I think they had to call the National Guard out to collect the garbage. I'm not certain of that, but it was a public health hazard because trash wasn't being picked up. So the men and the women who do this work, it's important, it's an important municipal service.
I have one other comment that is major, but I think probably easily fixed, because it was that way on prior plans. There is no dimensioning on this map. There's not a scale that I've located. It says the location, size, and description of the underground structures were provided by Cavosa Excavating or their agents.
There is a scale, Madam Chair.
Where is it?
One inch, she was four feet, so I mean, right hand, lower right hand.
Okay, I did get that. I did miss that.
The planning board required my client to have two certifications on this plan, unprecedented in my 30-plus years of experience over this board. We have a registered land surveyor, and we have an engineer, two stamps on this plan.
That was my mistake, that I didn't see that. I looked, but I didn't see it. But what do they mean by underground structures?
Yeah, excuse me?
What do they mean in here in the notation? The location, size, and description of the underground structures?
Okay, those are the items that are in the septic system and the tank for the fuel, et cetera, et cetera.
Ah, okay.
Those things, you know, I think of lesser importance to the board. They're there, they've been permitted in prior special permits.
Do you understand my confusion when I didn't find the dimensioning?
Right. This is, this is a double seal, good housekeeping, seal of approval plan, okay?
Jeff, your client wants...
Originally, our plan was drawn by one engineer.
Carl, can you get up here?
If you're going to testify, you have to come up here.
I just want to say, Pat, the reason why we...
Who are you?
I'm Carl Cavosa. The reason why some of those underground structures were, he's making that determination is, our original plan was done by one engineer. We went forward and started construction. We ended up with another engineer through the process, and I can't remember what the issue was. He had no way to verify the size and shape of those structures that were under the ground. So we just provided him the plan. Instead of him referencing the plan, he's saying that it came from us.
Thank you, because we are looking at this plan, and this will be the plan that we would be approving if we were to approve it. So are there any other questions from the planning board? Okay, then, at this time...
One last question. Does the state, when I was reading the state guidelines for location of these facilities, it said you had to certify that there's no wells in the area. And is there a setback similar to the Health Department with the 250?
250 feet, I believe, is the setback. And in our application, we said there were none within 250 feet of this area, because we're at 590. And we went over that last night, Doug, with the Board of Health, and they were very comfortable. They scaled it themselves. I didn't know the 590 until they scaled it.
Okay. That's it for me.
Okay. Then I will go to the public, and please, when you want to say something, come up to the podium and state your name. And I don't know, the gentleman with the baby may want to get out of here fast, so I'm going to call on him first.
Future planning board member. That's very Lisa voter. Just a procedural vote to start. My name is Ryan Mann. I'm at 109 Cloverfield Way. We are a neighbor, even though the train tracks are there. We are a neighbor, even though the attorney did not say we were. We are in the neighborhood of that area, so I'd like to make that very clear. There are several homes on that street, and I spoke at the town meeting last fall as well. Just a procedural question for the, for the planning board. From my knowledge of several people that went to the planning board office over the last week, this plan was not available for review. Is that true? Is that the case?
No, we've had it.
You've had it? So there have been people that have reviewed it?
Oh, yes.
Okay. Is it not available via being sent to somebody? You have to come in physically to see it? Why is that?
We have to come in.
Yeah, we do, too.
Yeah. I'm saying this because there is, I'm in, I'm out of, I'm off Cape from 8:00 in the morning till 7:00 at night usually. There is absolutely no way that I can get to a, to the planning board office for a review of that. I have several other folks. One folk that I spoke to in the last few days said that they've reviewed the file, and there was no details about what the plan was. So there's inconsistencies, and I would suggest that there would be more time for review of the plan in total. That would be really helpful.
There will be. This hearing will not...
Great. So that was the procedural thing. When do we see this actually being gone through in terms of full review?
This is part of the full review right now that we are doing. This is how it starts.
Right. So what do you see as a timeline? I mean, my question is, am I going to hopefully have a babysitter for the planning board meetings coming up for the next month, six weeks, year? I mean, I hope not for your sakes, sir.
Oh, gosh, no. I'd say probably it should be finished within a month, month and a half.
Okay, great.
But I can't guarantee that.
No, absolutely. No, I just, I just need to make sure that I have my scheduling all set so that I can make sure that I'm on top of it.
Our next meeting is the 21st.
Okay, thank you very much.
Because town meeting is next week.
Right. So the next question I have for the board is, what is J.E. dot Landers Colley?
An engineering firm.
Okay. So the reason why I ask that is because in the public hearing, it does not say Cavosa Excavating, it does not say Cavosa Landscaping, it doesn't say Cavosa Disposal, it says nothing of the sort. And because of that, I don't think some of the people that might know or want to know in the future would like to know that this is what we're talking about. And I think it's not very clear.
The company that it's coming in under is Nathan Ellis Highway LLC.
So what, that's not either one of your companies, right, sir?
Yeah, it owns the real estate.
So it owns the real estate, but the company and the applicant and the people that are actually running this is not that company. Is that correct? I think it's confusing and misleading potentially.
I understand what you're saying, but they're coming in as the owner of the property to get the permit for the property.
So for other companies, so just so I can be clear, the owner of the property is different than the companies that are on that property, which is the same person or same people, but in the, on the planning board agenda, it can't say Cavosa.
No.
Is that really true?
Because they're coming in under...
Okay. So, so, so do you see where that could be misleading to folks that might be in the public?
Believe me, my husband and I have been in business, and we deal with three or four or five different names of one company.
Okay.
Okay, so I understand your confusion, but...
And with that, ma'am, in this hearing, I was, I never heard that name ever, Nathan Ellis Highway Incorporated or anything. We heard Cavosa, 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 three companies. Cavosa Land, Contracting, Cavosa...
You might not have been here.
That may be true. But when I would, that's my problem?
You weren't here.
I have a lot of problems with this, so I would be glad to explain that.
No, it was announced and read.
Okay, sure.
I heard it.
Again, in the planning board agenda, it doesn't say anything about Cavosa, so I would appreciate it in future hearings, if we can look into that and make sure that that says that's who is actually running this facility. Is that possible?
I don't think it is.
You don't think that's possible? Is that not possible?
What do you suggest, Marlene?
You have to legally advertise this under the name of the applicant, not necessarily the owner, the applicant. So on your application, in your file, the applicant's name is Nathan Ellis Highway LLC. That is legally what we have to advertise this as.
But there's a key here. It's at 210 Nathan S. Ellis Highway. And that is that property?
Yes, that is that property.
Okay.
I would say that that's cryptic in terms of, we all know who's at 210, Nathan Ellis Highway. And I brought this up actually at town meeting last year when I said that I never knew where that is. I thought it was 151 even. So that was my bad, but I'm becoming educated through this process. I still think that there should be a way for a company to, if that's the applicant, you know, there's got to be a way to say that it's Carl Disposal or whatever.
But you heard what Marlene said. We can't do that.
Okay. Can I, can somebody check with the Attorney General about that, please? That would be great, because I want to make sure that everybody knows so that when we do, when this does get passed or, you know, is talked about and reviewed, that we make sure that everybody who potentially would have a voice here could have that voice. I just want to make sure of that.
One of the ways that it is made known is by the notices that are sent out.
Okay, so there's a great question. I never will receive a notice, because I am not legally in a butter.
Right.
But I guarantee you, if you have an organic waste disposal site, which this is, it's rotting, rotting meat and... rotting meat and all sorts of fish and all sorts of stuff rotting on the site for three months, okay, I'm in a butter all of a sudden. It's at my front door and I guarantee you that, okay? I'll get into that in a second if I may. But I think that, again, you can talk about the box around here, but this affects a lot more people. It really does. And I think when we talk about the neighborhood that we're affecting here, it's not just across the street. It's not, it is my neighborhood. It's my home. And I think, you know, as you talk about this permit and how it's being portrayed, I wonder, and I wonder if this is actually what town meeting was voting for. And I ask that because at town meeting, Mr. Cavosa did get up and said he was just continuing what he's already doing with a different, with a different, he's actually just getting around to changing the zoning. He was doing the same exact thing. He wasn't going to change anything. He was going to continue with his organic composting and he was going to be transferring waste. And in this case, this is organic compost on the site for an extended amount of time throughout the year. So this is not just taking stuff to a site. It wasn't, I think he actually said it wouldn't be stored overnight, I believe he said, or maybe just overnight. It wasn't three months. So this is a very different thing than what went towards town meeting. My experience professionally brings me to a lot of different areas of the state. And there are several composting facilities near where I currently work. And there is an odor when you go past them. And I am not saying that all composting facilities are the same. I actually am very impressed with how organized Mr. Cavosa's yard is. I think he has done a great job with obviously making sure that everything is in its spot. However, I think I do a pretty good job of taking care of my house too, and my trash stinks, okay? And the reason why it stinks is not because of the cardboard, which is not in my garbage, but it's not because of that. It's because of the eggshells that have a little slime in there or the banana peels and the rotting meat and fish and stuff like that. And that's exactly what he's going to be storing on his property for three months. My property is northwest of his property. Where does the summer wind blow? Southwest to northeast. I'm sorry, northeast. So I'm in direct line of that. One more thing that I'd like to just mention before I leave, and I really do appreciate your time. Thank you very, very much. And that is, there was a comment made at the town meeting last fall about, I'm the rat guy, okay? I mentioned that there could be rats. And I think that it's a very real concern when you have organic matter being stored on a site for three months at a time. The comment that was made by Mr. Cavosa was that I shouldn't be looking at his yard. I should be looking at some of my neighbors that have horse farms. That got me, okay, you know, you might be right. You might be right. I have to look into that. But I think really what I went away from that whole hearing about was more upset was that my neighbors weren't there. And I actually went up to several of them and I said, I'm mad at you. You weren't at that town meeting. You should have been there. And they said, we cannot go there because we are scared of Mr. Cavosa.
We can't.
They said that to me.
I understand, but please.
And you can say whatever you want. This is, the reality is, if you look at your folder and you have no negative things to wafting rotting stuff on a property, there may be other reasons. Okay? And that's all I have to say. I really do hope that Mr. Cavosa can listen to this, talk about backing up horns. He said he was going to not have that. I hear him once in a while. I'm out of the area for most of the day, so I don't hear him all day. But he said the backup reminders, he would not, he could turn those off. I don't know if that could be put into this permit. He's been, he said he would, town meetings, he said, I will turn it off. So maybe we can hold him to that. The one other question I have for you is, if this special permit is granted and I then become a septic sewage smell coming towards my house at any time, is there any recourse? Is there anything that is going to protect my real estate value as well as my family, the gentleman that's sleeping right in there right now, as he grows up? Is there anything that can do that? I'd love to give him a chance. I really hope we would give him a chance, but I want to make sure that there is, we hold him to it. We make sure that he has the, that if we do smell it, and we're smelling it in the middle of the summer, we have to have our doors and windows shut. I want to make sure that that can be handled and there's recourse for that. So I hope you can consider that. I very much appreciate your time.
You know what? I appreciate your coming, baby in hand. Thank you very much.
Well, sometimes we have to do what we have to do. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your time. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Peg Nicholson. I live in the Ballymead community, which is, we did receive in a butter's notice, so we are a direct a butter to this property. I have several questions. First of all, am I correct in assuming that you're not asking for a waste transfer station permit?
You need to talk to the board, ma'am.
Talk through the board.
Okay. Is this, this is not a request to operate a waste transfer station? Is that correct?
They already transfer demolition debris, but it's not any more than they had permits for.
All right, so it's not a permit to transfer solid waste?
They do that already. They, demolition debris, they...
Municipal solid waste.
Municipal solid waste.
Garbage.
Garbage. You're talking about soft waste when you're talking about garbage.
All right.
And that is what they're going to compost in. No, they're composting the soft waste there. They already haul the solid waste.
All right, but they're not permitted to bring solid waste onto the premises, store it, put it into larger containers, and take it off, other than recyclables? Is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
They can't store it, no.
But they can transfer it?
They can transfer it into a larger container to take off Cape.
And they already have a permit to do that?
They do. That's recycling, yeah.
So am I.
Perhaps, Jeff, you should describe.
Maybe I can clarify. We're not requesting a transfer station in the general way that the board and maybe the community would think of a transfer station, where you bring in municipal solid waste in small vehicles, put into larger vehicles, and you send it to a facility where it's disposed. The only thing that we're bringing to the site and transferring is cardboard. We're bringing in, we're requesting to bring in food waste and make it into loom and then transfer it out as loom or soil.
That's what this permit is about, what they're asking for, the special permit.
Where is all this equipment that you've described parked now? You're requesting a permit to park municipal solid waste trucks on the property and store waste dump. Where are they all now?
Currently on the site.
Without a permit?
The ones that are on the site are permitted under the construction, the C and D. There are a lot of dumpsters on the site because they're used for the demolition. That's the contractor business that he's already permitted for.
And the trucks that collect garbage and take it to C Mass or the Bourne landfill are not on site today?
Madam Chair.
Ken.
I would suggest that we let the applicant's counsel answer the questions.
Yeah.
We're not supposed to answer. Through us, to the applicant.
I think what's going on, and this is where I'm having trouble, and this is where I think we need to have them do it, is that there is a confusion as to the delineation of what they're asking for now versus what they currently have.
Please let the applicant answer the questions.
The vehicles are on site.
And they're permitted based on the special permit that was granted in August?
Jim.
They are part of the contractor's yard, which is a by right use on the site. They're not part of the special permit. You're asking us to talk about a special permit for something that's a by right use that they already have the right to do there? If I understand correctly, we're talking about four new things that are going on right now, and that's really what we're here to listen about. And you're going back to the special, the changing of the zoning, which is a done deal and they, this is a contractor's yard where they're allowed to store vehicles. That's a by right use. That's allowed by zoning. That's not a topic...
Even trucks that are not used in a contractor's excavation company?
Are hauling, any of his business trucks are allowed to be parked there now. I mean, that's the confusion. In our old special permit, we had lists of all the trucks and they were, everything was under a special permit. And there's a question of how many trucks and this truck or that truck. Now all the trucks can be there. I mean, it's part of a contractor's yard to store equipment and for hauling equipment, to taking in and out. What we're talking about tonight is the four components that have been, that the attorney spent an hour describing.
Can I clarify? Again, with all due respect, we do not have a permit tonight to park the waste hauling trucks that I've reviewed with the board. As a result of your decision last August, again, we went through the legislative process and we came to the board within a month of when the bylaw was approved. You know, you told us what the remedy was. We have followed the remedy as best we can. We're here tonight to get the proper permits for the use that was disclosed to the board, which has not been hidden at any time last year in our request for an amended special permit.
Marlene, you had something you wanted to say, I believe?
I just want to remind you, board members, that we're at the very initial public hearing stage, so it's important today to assemble the list of questions, assemble the information that you will need as we carry forward with this. And, you know, so try to get everything, get the entire list of questions and get everything that you need. And then as you go through your continuations, you'll be, we'll be able to answer more and more of those.
All right. The rest of my questions are more in that line. I was just trying to get clarity on what's happening now, what's permitted now. What is the limit on food waste in the general DEP permit that you received on March 1st or whenever it was?
You'll have to answer that.
Check the regulations and we'll give you the tonnage.
Madam Chair, to move it on to let other people talk...
Thirty tons a week.
I recommend that they ask all their questions, not look for an answer after each question.
We could do that.
Okay.
How many questions do you have, ma'am?
Eight.
Okay, if you could go through all of them, then that would allow the applicant to answer all of them.
Okay. How much food waste will the special permit allow you to process per week? Number three, how will this be measured? Number four, to whom will this be reported? Number five, who will enforce the limit? Number six, what happens if you have too much food waste for the amount of loam? What do you do with it? Number seven, how high is the berm at the front of the property? Because I heard that the compost piles 12 feet high and then the windrows are five feet higher than that, which now we're talking 17 feet high. So how visible is it going to be from either across the railroad tracks or from Nathan Ellis Highway? And then odor. Last night at the Board of Health meeting, Mr. Cavosa said there will be odor. How much odor? How much is too much? And what is the remedy? To enforce the question asked by Ryan in his previous session. I mean, if you're driving down Nathan Ellis Highway and you get odor like you get when you're driving up Route 28 past the Bourne landfill, that's a big problem. Who's the enforcement agency and what do they do to correct that problem? Thank you.
Okay. Jeff, would you like to take a crack at those?
Unfortunately, I probably did not get all of Mrs. Nicholson's questions, but I will try.
Please don't want to speak up, please.
Certainly. I'm sorry. I will speak louder. How much food waste per week? We can't tell you exactly how much food waste per week. We can tell you, we can't collect more than 30 tons a week by our permit. And we would anticipate it would be in the single digits, you know, starting out for sure. How will this be measured? It's measured by, we invoice our clients. So we're tracking how much food waste we're taking in from the clients that we will have. And we're logging that and we will be reporting that annually, which is part of our permit requirements to the DEP. So how will it be measured? It's measured by volume, essentially by these toters, which I showed you earlier. There was a question, Mrs. Nicholson, what was the next question after? How will this be measured?
Well, first of all, how much will the special permit allow? I guess that's to be determined. How will it be measured? To whom will it be reported and who will enforce the limit?
Well, I can tell you the Department of Environmental Protection issues us the permit on the state level. I assume they have the authority to enforce it. I assume if there's problems, nuisances, et cetera, our Board of Health would have the ability to enforce it as well, which is one reason why we were before them last night. As far as the visibility of the windrow, I'm not sure I can tell you exactly how visible it is. If you can't see the loom pile now, the chances are you will not be able to see the windrow because the windrow is not that much higher and it is set back from the road. So as you go by, what you see is the berm. That's why there are berms. That's why people build berms. And we have landscaping on top of it, so it is not an eyesore in our community. As far as the odor is concerned, there is an odor plan, which has been submitted to the DEP, which is part of the DEP requirements. It's been submitted to our Board of Health. It's been submitted to our planning board. When my client says there will be an odor, yes, there's an odor from decaying material. What you should be asking is, and I think you have asked it, is the next question, what will he do about it? It's part of the plan, and as I said previously, you turn the windrow, you add certain materials, you aerate, you add wood chips, and, you know, there's a science to this and that will, and you cover the windrow with wood chips. And I'm told all of those things are the way you control odor. And I believe that's what the DEP would say too, if they were standing here this evening. What you smell when you drive up Route 28 past the Bourne landfill is methane gas. It's not decaying vegetable material or meat material. That was a landfill and anything and everything was allowed in there, not just biodegradable materials. And I think as a result of that, there's probably some things that are in the ground up there that we're not real proud of having in our ground here on Cape Cod. I think that's part of the smell that we get. That's why landfills, when they're capped, they have to be vented so that the methane gas, which is building up underneath, won't cause an explosion. I'm not an expert on this, but, you know, I believe that's what we're smelling when we drive by, which is not the smell that you get from composting organic materials. That's not a methane gas. Have I answered your questions?
Yes, thank you. Although, just to play a procedure, I did go to the planning office and the only thing I was shown was that diagram. When I said, this doesn't tell me anything about what they're asking to do, nobody volunteered that file or anything in it. Should they have done that?
I'd like to respond to that. I'd like to respond to that. The, the plans that we submitted to the Board of Health, we submitted to the planning board today. Okay, we didn't, frankly, I didn't think that you wanted to get into that sort of detail, but they're in your file now. And it's something that we have to have for DEP. And everyone in the community is welcome to look at it. If the hearing's going to be-
So if it goes to the planning board, the planning office tomorrow, we could work that file?
As far as I know. The letter from Jeff is dated March 31st, so that had a lot of the detail of what you're-
Yeah, the odor plan, the vector plan, all of that was submitted to the Board of Health last week and to the planning board today.
Right. So that wouldn't have been in here. Okay? And the referrals from a number of the departments just came in this afternoon. That we can't control. And that is very good reason why we don't close the hearing tonight. Okay? Virginia?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Virginia Valiela, Precinct 5. I'm a resident of North Falmouth. And I've also had nearly 40 years of experience in the solid waste industry and composting and recycling. And so I have some questions and some comments. I'm very glad that you're not closing the hearing tonight. I did go to the board yesterday and there were some materials that were not available, but there were some and, and I still want to have a chance to, to review them. I am going to concentrate on the description of the requirements that you'll be reviewing when you decide on this special permit that were outlined by Mr. Oppenheim. He went through them, one, two, three, four, five. And so the two that, that I particularly want to comment on are, is number four, which was the negative impacts to the neighborhood, neighborhood character. And the fifth one, which had to do with sewage, potable water, and drainage. Regarding the neighborhood character, there was a notification to Valleymead. They definitely are a neighborhood that could be impacted either by litter or by odor. But also the Cloverfield residents, and that was that first gentleman that was here, he, he's on Cloverfield Drive. And they apparently did not fall within the regulatory definition of a butters. But they, they're close enough that, that they will be impacted. The plans that were required by the composting permit from DEP were briefly mentioned. There are four plans, toxic control, odor control, vector control, and a contingency plan, which is if the first three that we just mentioned don't work, what do you do? So you do need to really think about a contingency plan as well as just having a plan for toxics, odor, and vector. Those weren't in your file yesterday and the, the Board of Health, that may have been in their file. I attended the meeting last night at the Board of Health and they had not had a chance to see them. So in effect, those plans have, have been written by the applicant, but they really haven't been reviewed. And there hasn't really been a chance for everyone to, to see whether they're sufficient. So that, that's a piece of work that needs to be done and needs to come back at, at your next meeting. Mr. Cavosa has had a lot of experience composting successfully. And he described, his, his lawyer described in some detail how he does that. He has done some vegetable waste in the past. And last night at the Board of Health, he mentioned cranberry waste and he mentioned a load of potato peelings from, from the fair. That's very different than having up to 30 tons of food waste. And the Board of Health listened and, and was very thoughtful. It was an excellent meeting, I thought, and conversation back and forth between the applicant and the Board of Health. And, and it was George Hoyfelder who said, this is a significant notch up in what you're doing. And it's because of the type of material that is now going to be composted. It's going to have much more nitrogen in it. So it is, has a lot of biological oxygen demand. It's, will tend to rot much more quickly. And so it has to be handled quickly and carefully. Mr. Cavosa described how the trucks are, and, and so did Mr. Oppenheim, about coming up on top of this pile of loam of, of 12 feet and dumping it into a hollow and then adding other things. And, and this was the, the baking that Mr. Oppen, the recipe that Mr. Oppenheim was talking about. So, so it sounds on the surface like that they've given some thought into how they're going to do this. You have to remember that this material coming in may already be rotting. So, so depending on how frequently the pickups are and whether it was sitting in a very hot place, you may arrive with a problem, which when it's dumped, will cause an immediate odor event. That, however often the truck comes in, that potential is there. So getting on top of it right away is, is number one. Then the second is, the plan is to mix it with, with various ingredients and, and display it in these windrows. The oxygen, as I said, this, this material has a very high biological oxygen demand. It needs a lot of oxygen. If it doesn't get the oxygen, then it creates the odors. So the equipment that Mr. Cavosa described last night at, at the Board of Health and was mentioned again tonight, helps them measure how much oxygen is there and also temperature and indicates whether they need to, to add more oxygen. But they're not adding oxygen from a source like a compressor. They're adding it from the atmosphere, which requires you to turn the pile. So every time that pile gets turned, you have the potential for another odor event. And so there, there must be careful thought to how you're going to deal with that. In other, much larger composting operations, they try and cover it. It's been mentioned here, we'll use woodchips. Believe me, it's, it's very hard to cover an odor. It's, this is a case where prevention is going to be a lot better than trying to cure. You will have a lot of problems with odor if there is not really careful management of this operation. It was briefly mentioned that the odor from the landfill at Bourne, that was a very persistent odor. I respectfully say methane is an odorless gas, so it's not methane you're, you're smelling. It's the sulfides that are in the food waste and that's, or in the trash. That's what you're actually smelling. And the human nose is very sensitive to sulfides. It's the rotten egg smell or skunks. And so it, it, just a very small concentration will, will detect, you'll, you'll have a detectable odor. All of these considerations go to this, this item four, negative impacts on the neighborhood. I wanted to mention one other that's potential, probably Mr. Cavosa can figure out so that it doesn't happen. Every time you dump paper or load paper, you have a potential for a litter event. He's going to be loading into 100 cubic yard trailers. And I believe he, the, Mr. Oppenheim said they would use the excavator to do that. So perhaps he can explain exactly what attachment is on the excavator. Nonetheless, cardboard comes in various sizes and when, when you scoop it up to dump it into something, you have a potential for a litter event. Whether that would get offsite, I don't know. But most places that handle solid waste or do recycling, litter is a major problem. You would just, you have to have a very clear maintenance program and you have to be right on it. Okay. Those are my comments for the requirements under 240, 216, as far as negative impacts to the character, to the character of the neighborhood. Now, number five, regarding sewage, potable water, and drainage, stormwater drainage. The potable water, there is a well on site. The application to DEP says that there has to be adequate water pressure. And one of the issues that has to be considered is fire. There is no information in the application as to what the actual pressure or volume of this well is. And I, I think all of that data needs to, to be made public. There is no comment, we know where the well is, we know where the compost is way the other end. I don't know where water service is, how close it is to the compost area. There was some mention earlier about the potential for fire. And, and the composting itself will need some water at times because it will become too dry. So there, there needs to be more discussion about whether this well can actually support the proposed operation. Mr. Oppenheim said that there was no problem with drainage. And I have to respectfully disagree. I knew this property when it was just an empty sand pit. My kids used to, and I used to take walks in there. And there was a vernal pool here at the back that was more or less leveled off when the site was, when the site was developed. But the natural flow of the site is still to this area. I'm going to give you two aerial photographs. Sorry, I only have one copy. One was taken in the summer. This is Google Maps of this site. And that's the one that's basically green and just shows the, the area of Delancey's property and Mr. Cavosa's property. And the second one is the aerial photograph that holds the parcels. It's our GIS map. It was taken during the winter. And you will see on both of those, I put a little yellow arrow to it, that there is a very large pond where the stormwater from this site flows off the site and onto the property next door. The GIS map shows a larger pond than, than the one that is in the Google Maps. And I have no idea when, when these, these photographs were actually taken. But I did walk out there just this past weekend and the, the pond is, is there. So it's virtually a permanent fixture where the stormwater from this property is going. And it is now so deep that it's actually, there are mature trees, which are now standing in some feet of water. I don't know how, how deep. So I do think that a review of drainage needs to be taken on this property. The property maintains vehicles, it fuels vehicles. So you, you have an issue there that I think needs to be reviewed. The last comment I want to make has to do with the permit of how much material can be brought into this site. It was stated to be 30 tons a week, tons. But the records that they're going to keep are on the basis, at least based on the present testimony, are going to be from the carts, which are 48 cubic foot carts that have been distributed to the clients. And then there's going to be some sort of conversion factor. The simplest way to find out how much tonnage is really going into this property is to weigh the truck when it comes in with a full load. And there is no scale on this property. So Mr. Cavosa would have to go somewhere else, but that's not impossible, to have his trucks If, if, you know, you can do it monthly or agree on an average. I don't think every truck has to be weighed, but I think you need something more than, I dumped 50 toters and I estimate that this is the weight that was in them. So he is supposed to keep accurate records. That's one of the specific requirements of this permit. And I, I think that you need weight, not estimated weight based on estimated cubic yardage. Food waste is a lot of water. It can be up to 70% water. It's quite heavy. So you can get to 30 tons without too much difficulty. Thank you very much and we'll continue.
Yes, sir. My name is Tim Ridden and I live in the Valleymead community, so I am a, an a butter. I have a couple of questions. When Mr. Oppenheim had talked about one, two, three, and four, they talked about not putting a, a number of how many trucks can be parked there. And I guess that leads to a question of why, why shouldn't it be restricted? Number one. And number two is, will only trucks that are part of the Cavosa business be parked on this property? Or at some point in time, could there be trucks from a competitor that might want to use Mr. Cavosa's disposal property to be able to park trucks there? The, the same question goes for number two. Will dumpsters, storage and municipal solid waste dumpsters, will they only be dumpsters that are part of the Cavosa operation? Or will they be expanded over time to other entities? The cardboard operation, will the cardboard only be brought back to the property from current Cavosa accounts? Or will the operation include the opportunity for other people to bring their cardboard back, other companies to bring their card back, cardboard back to this facility? On composting, it sort of goes to the same question. Will it just be material being brought back from Cavosa accounts? Or will this facility be able to accept compostable material from other companies in the, that do business in the area? 30 tons of organic material, 60,000 pounds a week. And I think I heard earlier tonight that it, that it goes from beginning to end and the cycle is a 90-day cycle. So 90 days of 60,000 pounds is a lot of material, I think, to be on that space. So I guess the question is if this operation can actually handle 30 tons or it can, if it accepts 30 tons of organic waste a week, will it expand beyond the boundary? Something to be considered. I too am concerned with the odor. I drive Route 28. I get a whiff every once in a while. I would hate to think, I don't think that I'm going to get any odor where I live in Valleymead. I'm probably two miles from the site. I don't think I'll get an odor there. But I think when, when you investigate or look at the responsibilities that you have under 240, 216 and try to- under 24216 and try to determine what negative impact an odor might have on the residents that bought this piece of property, or anybody that might drive Route 151 to get from where they're going to some other location. What type of negative, how negative will it be to maybe say to somebody, "I'm not going to buy that home up there because I don't want to drive by this"? I think that's a consideration that needs to be reviewed. And I think the other thing is, recently, there was an article in the paper where Mr. Cavosa indicated that he was thinking about moving his excavating business across the street, I believe, onto those 31 acres that are available for sale that are owned by CLSV. And if that, if that would happen, does that allow this whole piece of property to be used for what he's described here, as well as whatever that business might grow to in the future? So Potomac thinks, Potomac thinks if his excavating business goes across the street, you know, it might not be the nine trucks he wants to park here. It might be the 45 trucks he wants to park here because his business has grown so much that he needs 45 trucks. It might be that the area for composting might need to grow because it's 60,000 pounds a week. Over 90 days is a lot of stuff. So I guess I have some concerns. I think that there's things that, that we all need to, to think about. And I think the potential for this business, the composting business, to grow, as I stated last night at the Board of Health meeting, is the, people that generate more than 1,000 pounds of organic waste a week are going to be required by the state to separate that organic waste from their regular trash. I think, so I'm sure that the Cavosa operation will have some of those clients, will have some of those customers. But I also do think that when you ask the person in a small store, say, "Hey, I'm going to, I'm going to market my business to you. So instead of, if you, you're not required to do this, but, you know, I'll, I'll pick up your trash at one rate, but if you can source separate and put food waste in a different container, I can take that out at a different rate for you." Which helps build his business to get to the 60,000 pounds a week of organic waste that he's been authorized by the permit to accept. I think people will do it because they think it's the right thing to do. You know, everybody's becoming a little bit more socially correct, corporate, you know, sort of corporate social responsibility. Some people will look to do this. I think there's a market for this. And I guess my concern is that, do I think composting is good? I do. Do I have concerns of where the location is? I do. I have concerns of where it is in relationship to where we live and where others live and where a ton of people drive by every day of the week, as well as the traffic that could possibly be, the additional traffic that could be possibly generated on, 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 on already busy road. One comment that I would say is, I, on the, of the parents of the, of the operation, when you're driving west, going towards 28, you know, if you look in, you'll see that the driveway's open and you'll see the office building, and maybe you'll see the top of this, if you, I guess if you're paying attention, you'll, you'll, the top of this building that's over here, the, where the trucks go. But I would tell you that when you, when you're driving east and when you look in, that isn't necessarily a very nice sight to look at, mounds of sand and loam and mixtures that are, in my, my mind, probably 20, 25 feet hot. So I appreciate the time, and it'll be interesting to see how this proceeds. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Matt.
Matt McNamara. Couple of questions, really, for clarification regarding the scope of the activities on this parcel, and then really a question to the planning board. And I think many of the folks that have asked questions have skirted around it, but I'm interested in finding out the number of vehicles, equipment, and dumpsters that were permitted under the contractor's yard, and the increase that will be allowed, or that is being requested in addition through this particular permit. The other is, in a similar way, the amount of acreage. What is the amount of acreage that was permitted at this parcel under the contractor's yard? And what is the additional acreage, if any, that is being requested through this permit? So those, just clarifying the scope of the project. And then the question really to the planning board, and it comes on Mr. Fox's comments, that this is, the contractor's yard is now by right. And if you recall, that there was some discussion I may have initiated at town meeting in terms of the special permit conditions that were on the contractor's yard, and whether or not they would still apply. And again, Mr. Fox says it's by right. Attorney Amant, who represented Mr. Cavosa at town meeting, said, "All the conditions will be intact and in place." And I guess my question to the planning board is, so we don't have any confusion over that or any arguments later on, and legal arguments, is the planning board willing to, where applicable, adopt the conditions of the prior special permit and impose them on this special permit? For example, the number of vehicles, the hours of operation, or one that we may tend to forget, that it was through the contractor's yard special permit that the berm was required. If it's now contractor's yard by right, and there is no berm special permit condition, if you don't put it into this special permit, there's no berm required. So just wondering if you're willing to look at that prior special permit, adopt some of the conditions, because as Marlene said, you might want to certainly adopt the record that doesn't necessarily adopt the conditions. So a couple of questions on the scope, and a question to the board. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Is there anyone else who wishes to?
Peter Nielsen, North Falmouth. Got a little bit of a dilemma here where I'm kind of on both sides of the, of the issue. I'm the manager of AAA disposal in Falmouth, the other disposal company. By adopting these bylaws, I mean the bylaws, the town meeting, the article, it actually helps my company. I say my company, the company that I work for. It allows me to open up a transfer station anywhere in town that I can get five-plus acres for. I was originally in Falmouth, in T-Ticket, and was moved out of there because of noise and because it wasn't allowed. Moved to Technology Park, and, and that property was sold to the Steamship Authority. So now my containers are stored in Bourne, and I can very easily now come back into Falmouth, go to town meeting, get some zoning changes, and, and get a special permit, come to the planning board, and open up a transfer station, do things like that, along with a lot of other disposal companies that do business in Falmouth can do exactly the same thing. So it's kind of opens up a can of worms of Falmouth becoming a transfer station of, of the Cape, actually, accepting waste from other towns. This is something that maybe the, the board wants to regulate or condition. On the other hand, on the other side of it, I'm actually a town meeting member from Precinct Five. At town meeting, I wanted to speak but didn't get in fast enough before the moderator closed down the hearing and there was no more testimony taken. But as a town meeting member, I voted against it, against the, the two articles, both articles, even though it would help out my company. I didn't feel it was in the best interest of North Falmouth, Precinct Five, or the town of Falmouth to allow this to, to happen. I am willing to answer any questions that anybody has. A lot of things were brought up here. I've been doing this full-time for better than four years now, and traveled to Bourne, Sandwich, Rochester. So I've been to all the, all the facilities. I see what happens when the wind blows and the trash flies, smells, fires, fire in Bourne, fire in Sandwich, and the problems that those caused. Caused my company, caused the neighbors, caused the town, the restrictions that Sandwich put on that facility. So any questions that anybody has, I'm willing to answer. I do have a statement here that I have proposed to this.
Anybody else wish to say anything?
Good evening. Maureen Harlow-Hawks, Nine Old Dock Road, West Falmouth. I just want to start off on, I hope you've all had time to read this. I know I was in the planning board today, and I did not have the opportunity to go through the whole file because it came in so late. At five minutes to four, it was handed to me, and they were getting ready to leave. And you guys had a meeting tonight, so it wasn't very appropriate to hang around. Now that this is being continued, I'm grateful of that, to be able to peruse the file in more depth. And I hope you do, too. Does the rezoning, and I'm not going to expect answers, answers tonight, because I know now we have more time and opportunity, and they'll be in a better format for you, because some of them I've crossed off because they've already been answered. And my writing's terrible. Does the rezoning and potential special permit null and void existing permitting and special conditions on this parcel? And I think that's sort of what Mr. McNamara was touching on. So that is really important. And can Mr. Cavosa dump and pile rubbish and cardboard there now? That, I don't know.
He's been able to do the recycling of the cardboard.
Okay. All right. So the, the photo that is in that file, which I did see, and I know it was anonymous, but it was, I guess, a drone or something took a picture, and there was this huge pile of cardboard on the property being, I guess, composted. And I think it would be nice that, you know, if, if that is happening, that we, we kind of keep it contained so it doesn't become a flyby.
They don't compost the cardboard. They compact it and recycle it.
Well, in the picture, it just showed a huge pile, huge, huge pile, of just loose, errant cardboard. And I thought they were composting it, but I guess they just, they throw it on the ground and then they reload it. Okay. And how and where do the trucks and dumpsters get washed, and what chemicals are used? Will water runoff be contained and treated? Is there going to be a baseline groundwater quality test prior to the site being used for composting, storing, and transferring garbage? A hydrology test should be done before this permit is, if this permit is issued. When we were talking about the stamps on the plan, it's not uncommon at all to have two stamps on a plan, because of what they call a public land surveyor, PLS, he cannot be an engineer, and an engineer cannot make a plot plan. So you do need both. And we have, we don't, we used to on CONCOM not accept them without both stamps. So I'm glad that you have both stamps. Will permanent bounds be installed to delineate the area that they are talking about using? There's been serious encroachment issues on this property in all aspects of his permits. He's been on the, the corp, the company has been on Crane Wildlife, the Fish and Wildlife property, they've had encroachment areas there. And I just hope that there are permanent bounds of some sort that will not allow this Will, how often will the test water be done and by whom? And the methane gas, it is created during composting, and it is flammable, so I'm glad that the board and the fire department will be able to respond to this, and that they haven't done that yet. And, and then they'll have a fire prevention protocol, because I don't think a well will handle a fire of that magnitude when it gets into compost piles, and I'm sure that could happen. What happens to the end product? Is it packaged, trucked out, and/or resold to the public or commercially? And if so, is retail allowed in light industrial C? Because under the current permitting and special permits on this property, there is no resale on that property. And I know it's been done, but it's not allowed. And again, we make sure that that is not, if it can't be done, it should not be done. If it is, I hope you put into some play how it is done because of the traffic with the public going in and out of there, buying compost or however. And I think Mrs. Valiala hit on the windblown management plan, which the Department of Environment and Conservation requires, so that needs to be looked into. Will there be local and/or state site visits on a regular basis to make sure everything is in compliance? Again, there have been many compliance issues on this site in the past. And that was just for trucks, not garbage. Will there be a required rodent control policy in place? Again, the Department of Environmental and Conservation requires that, so I would look into that. Will there be a traffic lane to allow eastbound vehicles to go by a stopped truck turning onto the site? That's a problem right now. Everybody has created their own lane. It's not a problem at all when they're heading, when the trucks are heading west, because they pull off and slow down and go into the site. But when you're going east, and the sun's in your eyes in the morning, and a truck is stopped there to turn in, people either jam on their brakes, or they've made a rut, and they go into the dirt, and they go around them, and the bridge is really narrow there. So I just hope that it was required in one of his permits, and it was never done, so I just would like to see that happen if this goes forward. And on October 15th, 2002, the planning board amended special permit, and I won't do it, requiring him to install signs saying caution trucks entering. That's never been down and done, and that was in 2002. So if we do, if this does get permitted, I hope it's more expedient with what's required than 14 years later. A five-acre site is required, but only a small portion is being used. Can he use the whole five acres at some point in the future? Or is it just a certain area? Mr. Douglas Brown stated on October 14th, 2014, at the hearing, that screens of natural berm should be placed around the property. The screens would prevent unsightly appearance from intruding on a butter's property, and that is true. But I would like to know how this board will prevent the odors and the noise from intruding onto the butter's property. And the berm does do a very nice job. And that is, the, the wind is predominantly southwest in the summer, and I don't live on Cloverfield Way, but I'm sure if I was sitting on my patio with a festering pile of compost, and it's blowing southwest about 25 or 30, you're going to smell it. And I don't think we need another turbine. That's an incident in this town where we impact poor people, they're, I mean unfortunate people, that are on that road, that now have bought agricultural land, agriculturally zoned, and everything there was, and now we have light industrial C, and now they're going to have to suffer. sea, and now they're going to have to suffer with the consequences that this board and town meeting has voted. So I just hope you take in consideration those people. The wildlife corridor, I've never heard anybody, including the engineers on the plan or anything else, is it on the plan? Can I look to see if the wildlife corridor is on the plan? No. There's no wildlife corridor shown on the plan, and that is a state wildlife corridor that was supposed to be kept intact throughout all of Mr. Cabosa's projects and business that's gone on there. I think it should be on the plan. I think it should be marked and I think it should be kept open. I don't think, I think legally it has to be. Operational hours have not been discussed either and I hope that they are limited. No other trash hauling companies operate 24/7 that I know of and the neighbors need to sleep. You cannot shut off backup alarms. Mr. Cabosa has stated that he can shut his backup alarms off. I called the DOT. You cannot shut backup alarms off. It's illegal. And maybe on his private property can. I can't imagine him having his drivers jump out and unhook the backup alarm and jump back in and use them. But anyway, and I don't know if OSHA would really like that. And that's a really loud noise and that's why it's there. It's for safety. It's so people don't get run over. But it also travels and carries quite far. And I don't think that the neighbors, again, should be subjected to the tailgates banging, the backup alarms, the jake brakes when they have to slow down to go in. They're very annoying. And there's a lot of information that has been submitted tonight and from the Board of Health, and I think there's a lot to digest and I'm sure this is going to be a lot of long meetings. I would like to say for the record, I think that this is a good project as far as composting and getting waste out of the mainstream. Rustrout started in 1955, so this is not new. Virginia Valleye LaHid started recycling in this town. Where it is, I don't think is appropriate. I really hope that Mr. Cabosa and the town could get into more of a partnership and put in an appropriate place like the town transfer station that we already have and is struggling to make money. And maybe between the two of them, they could work something out and we could get a good product for this town. We've been consolidating and consolidating. That's what our, you know, town manager keeps telling us to do. And maybe this would be a really appropriate time to talk and sit at the table with Mr. Cabosa and the planning board and consolidate this project in an appropriate place where there are no people. That's why the dump was put there back then, instead of trying to put five pounds of stuff into a one-pound sack. And I would just like to see a collaborative work together from Mr. Cabosa and the town and save the neighbors from a lot of aggravation. And I would like to submit to you, and I'm sorry I did not make enough copies, but you're welcome to this, it's very, very enlightening, a lot of information that is very positive on what Mr. Cabosa is trying to do. And it is the right thing to do environmentally as long as all the regulations are adhered to. But I would like to put in the file, I am opposed to this project on this site.
Thank you for this.
Would you tell us what the document is?
Yeah, I'm going to. And actually, she's made it very nicely easy for us to look at with all the orange sticky markers. It's environmental guidelines, composting and related organics processing facilities, the Department of Environment and Conservation. That's W.
Commonwealth Massachusetts?
I don't think so. No, EPA. Thank you. Federal, thank you. Yeah.
And state guidelines are in there too. They're, it's a collaborative. It's just that we couldn't.
Yeah, thank you. I'm putting it in the file right now. And her statement that she's opposed to. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? Yes, Jeff.
Madam Chairman, I'd just like to say there's been a lot of thoughtful questions asked by a number of the speakers. And we've done, or we're trying to do our best to write as many of them as down as we possibly could, and we will endeavor to give a written response to those questions to the board and submit it to you before the next public meeting, whenever the board sees fit to have that.
That will be the 21st. Town meeting is next week. So we're shooting for the 21st. Okay? Yes?
Do you think, based upon that comment, do you think it might be advantageous for those of us that spoke to end write and issue to empower questions so they don't get missed?
It would be helpful because I have been busily writing and they have been busily writing.
So they don't get missed?
Yes, and that's my point.
I think it would be very helpful to us.
It would be very helpful.
Pat?
Yes.
Could you please let everyone know that anyone who wants to submit written comments should email them to planning@falmouthmass.us.
Did you hear that? Okay. If you can, please submit your written comments to planning@falmouthmass.us. That makes it a lot easier.
Madam Chairman, if the questions were submitted by email, it would probably make it easier on the staff to then just forward them to us rather than.
Yeah, that's the point, yeah. Makes it just a whole lot easier all the way around. Electronics can be wonderful unless you get sunspots that interfere with things. Okay, now, seeing no other hands being raised right now, you've heard me mention at least a couple of times that this is going to be continued until the 21st. Next week, we're all going to be tied up with town meeting, which will likely go on at least two days, and that's our meeting night. So I want to thank you all for coming tonight and giving your questions and thoughts to us.
At 6:30 in the town hall.
Yeah, I'm always supposed to say that. 6:30 in town hall in this room. And I hope you'll be able to come then and listen to the answers to these questions and perhaps give us some further insight. Thank you again for coming.
Do we need a motion to continue the hearing?
No. No, I don't think we, we don't need a motion to continue.
You can continue it as chairman.
Yeah.
The 21st, at 6:30 in town hall.
Yeah. I mean, we do sometimes, but. Okay, so the next thing on the agenda is general correspondence, and in fact, we don't have any. So, and I announced that the next meeting is the 21st, so I'm going to ask for a motion to adjourn, please.
Move to adjourn?
Second.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.